Keep this up.
I'm ready.
Yep.
All right.
We're using the owl to broadcast to YouTube. So we can all look and speak at the little thing in there and speak up clearly. And that's how folks watching online would be able to hear us.
Perfect, thank you. I'd like to call this year's Central School District Budget Committee meeting to order. And we will start with a flag salute.
Let me just do the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and pertinence for all.
And thank you everyone for taking the time to be here and serving. And I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Yeah, well, welcome everyone. We're going to do the easy part, which is introduction. So if you wouldn't mind your name, where you live, if you have either gone, have kids, been in this school district before, taught, et cetera, please feel free to share that. So Jen Cavista, Superintendent of School District.
Pete Swan, current presiding chair here. We live in Zone 7, just out of town. I have four children in the district, two at Talmage, two at Monmouth Elementary School. And yeah, I've been on the Budget Committee a few years now. So.
Brian Plener, HR Director.
Byron Schinkel, School Board, Zone 4, have lots of kids, including myself. I've been graduating through this district, so you got a lot of skin in the game.
I'm Anne Devane, I'm District 2 and live in Independence. And yeah, the grandson that goes to IES, 3rd grade.
My name's Nicole Walker-Sundy. I live in Zone 3. I think I'm repping a different zone officially. I have two kids currently in the school district, both at Ash Creek, one heading to Talmage next year. And then I registered my youngest for Kinder at Daily Child this weekend, so.
I'm Royal Johnson, I'm Zone 3. I've lived in the town for 54 years in Monmouth. My kids all graduated from Central and went on from there. And so I've been very interested in the community, City Council and volunteering for a lot of things. So.
Jake Volleton, Zone 2, but representing for, I think, something like that. And I retired part-time substitute teacher in Salem Kaiser School District. And I've lived here in Independence for seven years.
Hello, I'm Turner Martinez, actually class of 2019, so not too long ago. I'm into IES and Talmage, Zone 5, just nearby Mark. Happy to be here.
And all, I have two kids, even Zone 1. I have two kids, one in high school and one in junior high. This will be going to high school next year. This is my second year on the Budget Committee.
I'm Don Wall, I'm on the School Board representing Zone 6. And I have two graduates of Central School District that are now in their 40s that live in Portland. And I have six grandkids at Pennwood School up there.
I'm Jan Jobe, and I have lived in Monmouth most of my life. And our, my husband and I have one child, and she's a graduate of Central High School. My nieces and nephews are either graduates of Central High School or soon will be. I taught chemistry at Central for 12 years, chemistry and physics. And I was its Assistant Principal, then I was the Principal of Talmage. And then I was the Assistant Superintendent and the Curriculum Director. I think you can safely say that I really love this community and the school district. It's a pleasure to live here.
So I'm Steve Mosher, I'm in Zone 1. We, my wife and I, Leanne, have six children that are all graduates of Central High School. She is an employee of the City of Independence Public Library and has been there pushing 30 years. So, and then I'm retired fire paramedic, spent my career with the Portland Fire Bureau. And as a volunteer with Polk County Fire District 1. And I did 32 and a half years here at Polk County as a volunteer.
I'm Steve Coats, I'm the Director of Finance and Operations here, live in Monmouth. And I had, I met Jan when I started dating a teacher at Central High School. And so have known her for.
40 years.
45 years.
Yeah.
And my daughter graduated from Central in 2008. And now I have a one-year-old grandson who just lives a couple blocks away, so be ready.
Excellent.
Number 4.
Number 4, yeah.
Anybody wants Pete's job as the Presiding Officer?
I was lost, I thought we still had parts B and C, but we got through all that, so.
Yep.
I'd like to nominate Pete Swan to be the Presiding Officer.
I'll second it. You accept the nomination?
Sure, I accept the nomination.
Any other nominee?
You can nominate yourself if you want.
Yeah, we will allow that.
Seeing none, I guess you should call for the vote.
Yeah, I guess we get a call for the vote here. So, I have been nominated again to be the Presiding Officer of this Budget Committee. All those in favor, say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay, raise your left hand. It seems to be unanimous. Well, thank you for the confidence. I will try to keep us on time and on target.
Maybe a little bit difficult this year.
It'll be a challenging year, I'm sure. So, thank you for that. Moving on to the fifth item. Steve, did you want to go through and review the last year's budget today?
Yeah, thank you. In your folder are a couple of documents. The first one you may have is the agenda for this evening, followed by some handouts that we were emailed last week. There is an additional one in that, so if you had printed out and brought your own, be sure and make sure that you are using this copy. And then the next packet is actually the slides that we're going to use tonight. So you'll be able to keep these if you want to make notes on the side of the slides about either comments or questions that arise. And please feel free to do that. So, our general agenda this evening, we will actually start with a little introduction, which we have some new members this year. So we want to kind of do a school finance 101, and then I'll talk about that current year-to-date. We will give the budget message and an overview of where we are. Some interesting informations for the demographics in our district, some assumptions looking forward, and questions that we're going to need before our next meeting. So I will let, you want to do?
Sure, okay. So we just want to make sure that everyone has a good understanding, because I'd like to say that school finance is simple. It is not, because there are lots of different levels that we need to look at. So we do just want to spend some time, and again, you can see behind me, I'm not going to read, but it can be at times confusing or complicated, because we're talking about not only taxes, but there's different types of grants, donations, fundraising, those types of things. But again, they're really divided into seven categories, and we're just going to spend a minute just going through those to, not only for you all, but we do have a lot of people that watch this, maybe not live, but will go back and watch the Budget Committee. And I think it's really important that we share with the community the important pieces. So, when you look at school financing, there are categories, as we like to call them. So the General Fund, and we're going to go into a little bit more detail, but there's the General Fund. We have special revenue funds, which actually are both state and federal. So both of those options are there. Then we have debt service, which again is tied to, as an example, a general obligation bond. From that perspective, we have also capital funding. And I think it's really important that capital funding is, can only be used for certain things. And that's a, really a lot of times people think, well, why can't we just move money from the capital over into the General Fund? You know, those types of rules are not allowed, so there's specific spending. And then we, when we have money to do it, we have contingency and reserve funds. We will hopefully have a few, as we share with you with the budget next time we meet. But these are the main areas of school financing within the state of Oregon. So if we go to the next slide, the largest fund is our General Fund. So it's the largest one of all of them. It is the most flexible and adaptable fund that we have within the school district, which allows us to move things around to a period, because again, over a certain amount, we would have to come back to you all as well as the board. I think it's really important to note that of the General Fund, 87% of that fund is for salaries and benefits for personnel across the district. So again, that's a big portion of that funding. And then again, local property taxes go into the district's General Fund as part of our revenue, and we'll talk a little bit more about that moving forward. So that's the first bucket, as I like to call it. The second bucket of money is really focused on our special revenue funds. And this money can, is restricted, again, could be student activities. So you have certain things that students raise money, they can only spend it on that. Local grant funds, we're going to show you a couple of those from a state perspective and a federal perspective, and then programs that are determined at those levels. So if you go to the next slide, just as an example, so one of our state examples is what's called the Student Success Act. And this comes from the corporate tax, which went into effect in 2019. The fund itself, the bullets below here are the only things that we can spend now. It gives us flexibility, so counselors, I'm just going to use as an example. We have counselors that will be, once we show you, go through the budgets. We have counselors that are in the Student Success Act. That could fall under health and safety. That could fall under well-rounded education. So there's different buckets that we put, programming, potentially professional learning as well as staffing, and this is just one of those examples that is in the state school fund. I will tell you, outside of the General Fund, this is probably the next most flexible funding that we have within the district. The next example that we give, again, another state source on the next page for you, is one called High School Success. I will tell you, this one's quite restrictive. It is only for 9th through 12th. There's a small portion of it that can be used for 8th grade, but it's really towards the end of 8th grade going into their 9th grade year. This fund is restricted. You're going to hear us at times use the word supplant, so we cannot supplant into this. So as an example, if we have something that's in the General Fund, we cannot move it into the High School Success Fund, to just give you an example. So this is a much more restrictive type of grant that we have. Again, three areas that it's focused on, as just an example, dropout prevention, college level opportunities, and career and technical education. So some of our expansion at the high school in our career in technical education is because of this grant that we've been able to use. The next version is just more focused on the federal sources. So child nutrition is one of the big ones that is federally funded. Obviously, it can only be used for that. You also have different types of funding called the Individuals with Disabilities, IDEA is what you'll hear us say, Education Act. That is funding that is specifically for special education only. I will tell you, it's a small amount. It's not a large amount of money, but it does help with some of the things that we have to make sure that our students with disabilities have free and appropriate education. And you'll, we're going to talk a lot about special education. There's some things in here that we're going to share with you today. Another example of that federal funding that we get some of the money from is called Title 1A. And that is based off of students identified in poverty. So the amount of students that we have that are in poverty, we get that assessment from the federal government from that perspective. So again, we want to give you just a couple of different examples of what both state and federal special revenues look like. The next one is our debt service. Again, you've heard us, we'll reference it at times as general obligation bonds. This is a money that's approved by taxpayers, again, voting residents for those specific things. So the last one we passed was the high school, so that we're still, as a community, paying that off. But I think the other thing in this category, we also like leased buses. So that is another debt service that can be put into the funding for the school district. But that's a little bit about that fund. The next one's specifically capital improvements. I think this is the one that I will say always, there's, at times that money is sitting there, and people always want to ask, why can't you just move it? This is why. It can only be used, it's a revenue that comes from construction excise tax, but it's really on new construction within the district. Or at times the board will put our surplus if we sell property or anything like that, put that in it, but it can only be used for capital improvements. So something breaks within the building, we can go in and fix it from that perspective. From the, that's not what I'm going to say is regular maintenance or facility use. So we, this is really put in place to try and help schools with what we're doing. And then again, obviously, as more businesses and homes come in, it is a benefit to be able to help and do some construction within the community. I would say at least construction has slowed down, so that amount has not grown that much. It grows every year, but hasn't grown much in the last couple of years. And then the last one that we talked about is what we call contingency or reserve funds. These are, we call them rainy day funds. Some of that were required by the policies within the school district that we have to keep a certain amount of money set aside. We like to say it covers one payroll of everyone, as an example. So we do have that. Sometimes we try and put reserves aside. You saw us a couple of years ago put reserves aside for curriculum adoption that helped us to implement language arts. So you see different buckets of that. Sometimes you'll see a contingency where insurance is going to be going up. So you might see some contingencies tied to insurance as we work with both of our associations, as an example. So those are the different types of things you've also heard us talk about. And we're going to talk about PERS. So we also at times have put reserve funds within the budget that are specific to PERS, which is retirement for those of us that are government agencies that have those opportunities. So that's, before we go on, questions about any of the different buckets? I think it's just important to spend a little bit of time to show you all in the community just the differences between where we can and can't spend the money.
I have a couple.
Sure.
You, on the General Fund, you say property tax is mostly there. Are there any other dollars that the district gets that go into the General Fund?
Yep, we are going to talk about that next. We're going to dive into the General Fund. The biggest share of the General Fund is state school fund, which is appropriated by the legislature from all of our income taxes. But the district gets also a small amount of property tax for operations, and that is it.
I have another one. I have one more, sorry. For the Student Success Act, you, the slide list of like 4 or 5, and you said you cut it spread around. Is our targets of like 50% has to be on health and wellness or safety?
No, no. That is an ability for us to move as needed. And again, a lot of that, what we put in there is tied to the, and again, you'll see that in my budget message tied to our, the district's strategic plan. And so really trying to, how can we, within those areas, continue to improve K-12? Because we do try and spread at K-12, you'll, you will at times see a little bit more K to middle school because of the high school success, because that does have its own bucket of money. But there are still things that we use 9th through 12 also in the Student Success Act.
All right, so like do you put 100% on health and safety if that was?
We could, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Question, on the contingency and reserve fund, I want to make sure I heard you. You said that required by policy is at least one payroll?
It's a percentage. Usually that percentage is a coverage of a one-month payroll.
It's a school district foreign policy to keep a certain percentage of the General Fund as a contingency. So it'll show up as a separate line item every year in the General Fund. And again, because in the past, the way state funding came through wasn't always reliable, wanted to make sure we had enough to cover a month's payroll in case there was a disruption.
Is 6% a month's payroll?
Hold on, let me, I'm trying to start remembering what the actual.
Yeah, right, right, right now that is set at 7% of the general operating budget. Yeah, real.
Okay, I got a question to ask, and we're just starting on all this. How much did our enrollment drop this year?
We're going to talk about that.
Well, I mean, that affects everything in general.
Right, so you're going to see a lot of.
We're going to see that next year.
It's an issue.
Okay. All right, so we will move on to discussion about the General Fund. Again, our largest fund, our most flexible fund. And that is, we'll start off with the, what you should have gotten yet. We've got your email, it's stapled here. And then you should also have in the packet here. And if you look at it, the first page, our all, our revenue funds. This report includes historical actual data. So you'll see what we actually received and spent in 2021 through 22, 22 through 23, what we budgeted in 23, 24 versus what we actually ended up with. Our current budget, 24, 25, and our actual year-to-date as of March 31st, which is three quarters of the way through the year. So on a lot of these, we want them to be about three quarters. We hope that, especially revenue is three quarters or more, and expenses are three quarters or less. We'll go through a few of those. So this is where you can see that 95% of our General Fund revenue is from the property taxes, which are primarily received in November. That's why we're over 75%. Most people who pay their property taxes or whose mortgage companies pay their property taxes in November, we get 85% of our property taxes in that month. So we are being at 99% for property taxes on the very first line. Doesn't mean we expect to get a huge amount more. We'll get a little bit more. So, and then the state school fund, which is down on a lower third of the page, it says R3101, State School Fund General Support. That is our largest revenue source. It's our largest revenue source in the General Fund. It's our largest revenue source from anyone we get. And that money is delivered to us in a formula that is a statewide formula. And you'll hear a lot more as we talk about the state school fund. Because we are in the long legislative session, the beginning of a state biennium, two-year planning process, the legislature hasn't yet figured out how much of that we're going to get. And once they figure out how much state fund is going to be put into the state school fund, then it has to go through the formula to determine our share. So we will, we are making some assumptions that we'll let you know about, but those assumptions are all subject to change, probably until June. I'm going to say June is when we'll know. And we have to have this budget adopted June 30th. But we may not know until the first week of June. So this is our challenge. And then also just another note about revenue. Each year in May, school districts receive adjustments to last year's revenue. So last year, they paid us, paid us, paid us, gave us all of our state school fund. And then they come back this May and go back and look at 23, 24 to figure out whether or not we got enough, or too much, or too little. This year, because of declining enrollment factors, we got too much. So they have not given us our final look back to what last year was. But so far, their first two calculations, it's negative. We budgeted for a little bit of negative. We budgeted for negative, might be a little bit more than I budgeted.
What line is that again?
That doesn't show separately here. This is all part of the state school fund, R3101 adjustment.
So you're saying it might not go up from 27?
It's, it, it will, we get two more payments. We get, well, actually, we get one more, well, from this, we get to April and May, we get a payment. So those will be two positive payments, and then there'll be a negative. So it will, it will not, we will not have enough negative, but it'll be less, so it'll be slightly more.
But maybe, so if you look at, I'd like to say, as you look at the, to where it says budgeted 32721 on that R3101, that's probably the number that we'll, we adjust from, from there, depending on what we get back from our look back. And again, that's tied to not only attendance, but the demographics of our school district, which we're going to talk a little bit further about, because that's what, that is also what impacts the, our assumptions.
Just to clarify, they don't take that from this year, they take it from next year?
They take it from this year. They do take it from this year, so we have to adjust, and that's part of the reason we're.
That's why they do it in May, so that if they, if it were that bad, they would just not pay us at all.
In May.
Correct.
But we think, we think though, that it'll be somewhere between where it is currently and what we budgeted, somewhere in between, but closer to where we are currently.
Yeah. Because I did plan for some negative.
Yeah.
So that's revenue. So again, this is, and this is a report the board gets every quarter, updated with the detail. I'd be glad to answer questions about other line items if they intrigue you at other points in time, but this is just general overview about our General Fund.
I think, I thought from last year, I remembered it was 70 million, and minus the other funds, like grants, and this is just like the more of the General Fund?
This is only just your.
But then everything is 70.
That was our, that was our total budget, including debt service, capital improvements, and all of the special revenue funds.
And we don't have the, those pages yet?
No.
Okay.
And this doesn't even have 25, 26. We're just looking at where we are today. So you understand a little bit about the challenges we're facing as we prepare budget. The next two pages are the expenses. They are divided into sections. The first section is payroll. Those accounts start with 100 on the left, like the 100s. The second section is taxes and contractual benefits. Those are all the accounts that start with the 200s. So as we pointed out, those two sections alone comprise 87% of our General Fund operating budget. But you will see, if you look at the percentage for the 100 subtotals and the percentage for the 200 subtotals, I mentioned that we want to be around 75% of our expenses. We've gone through 75% of our fiscal year as of this report. We are not at 75. That is because we have had a large number of personnel vacancies. We have not been able to fill all year long. So those were budgeted. So those were budgeted, but nobody applied for them. And we have the addition now, and I think you'll hear this from a lot of employers, with state-paid family leave, so the paid leave Oregon. Um, a lot of our employees are eligible for that and are taking those leaves. They don't have to use their own sick pay or their own time for that. So that pay is not actually, we are not actually paying that out. They are saving that, those paid days up, their PTO, they can save that up and use paid leave Oregon instead. So we see some of that happening, which is why we are under budget on our payroll.
About what percentage is working? What percentage is that?
Uh, we could, we'll add that to the FAQ. I don't, I don't know if our A stars have those numbers. But we'll add that to our.
How many people are on, how many people are on?
Taking paid leave Oregon.
Like is it fifteen percent, ten percent, five percent?
Oh, it's, it's not, it's not that high.
We'll, we'll, we'll get it. Yeah, we'll add it, yeah. But as you know.
And that's, to keep in mind too, in paid leave Oregon, it's not something where somebody is permanently on that. It's, it's limited by a number of weeks and, and you have to qualify for it and it's a percentage of your salary, so.
But we don't pay that out.
We, we, um.
We pay for it.
We pay up front.
Monthly.
Yeah, there's a monthly.
It's like that employment, we pay and we're funded.
Employer.
So we haven't been able to fill these positions, but we still need to serve our students. So we have had to hire a lot of substitutes. And in fact, we this year actually couldn't even get enough substitutes to take some of these positions. They probably knows this. And we have had to hire from temp agencies who specialize in serving some of our highest needs students. So the cost for those folks does not appear in the one hundreds and two hundreds. It appears on the next line down, which is three-ten instructional um professional and technical services. Oh. So if you look at the three-tens, you will see that all the savings we have in payroll and benefits is being paid to staffing agencies.
And substitutes, again.
Well, there's definitely, right, so that is where this balancing this budget gets tricky.
Fair to say that the vast majority of that is special education?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
But it's, it's, it's um.
At least.
It's almost all of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would say seven, five, eighty percent, if not more.
And this also reflects unconfined mandates for special ed?
Uh, there are bills that have made other things challenging, yes. I'll just raise it that way.
Answered my question.
So that three-ten is specifically people who are working in classrooms, direct instruction and instructional support for students. Um, I mentioned that three-ninety is other um technical services. For example, our non-classrooms, um employees when they have substitutes, libraries, offices, things like that, those are in the three-nineties. And because of paid leave Oregon, that's also a larger number than we have experienced about. And I, people don't want to come to work sick and we appreciate that nowadays in ways we didn't appreciate it five, six years ago. So um we are spending more on those services. And I'll just point out, our other largest line item is actually three-twenty, so it's right under that giant expenditure for um substitutes and temps, and that is property services. That includes, you know, repairs, maintenance of our building and utilities. So you can imagine that with our buildings, that is a large number. But I'm happy to say that uh property services is kind of right on budget. So three fourths way through the year, you wanna have spent three-fourths of your budget, they're, they're right.
What's the difference between three eighty and three ninety? Are they both non-instructional?
Yeah, so three-ninety are general services, like substitutes and some other things. Three-eighty is attorneys, auditors, uh consultants, higher, they are, they are serving the district, not students and education and technical specifically.
Again, uh, on the backup second, on the three-ten, there's part of that money, do we get some of that from E S D? I mean, you know, the, now, don't we pay them for some help too?
Yeah, that's a great question. So um, we, the state gives us a chunk of money in our state school fund. They give a chunk of money to the Willamette Education Service District, which serves all school districts in Marion Polk Anvil Counties. We purchase services from the Willamette E S D. Things we couldn't hire ourselves. We, we purchase school psychologists, we purchase autisms, we purchase audiology services. We also purchase some other technical services. They host our finance software and things like that. In the past, we used to purchase those services out of the pot of money they had sitting there for us. And we would get some back. We didn't spend all of our money and we can actually transfer it in and we would have revenue in here for that. And that is no longer the case. We purchase, we have such high needs that we can't hire, they do. We purchase that, um, you will see on the revenue line twenty-one oh two, or you can take my word for it.
Okay.
Education service district apportionment. Three, four years ago, we got eight hundred thousand dollars back out of that, that we could use in the general fund for anything. Uh, last year we got a hundred and twenty-five thousand, but that was only because we ended up not spending some of that money there. This year, uh, from the E S B, we have twenty-six thousand so far.
And we used it all, and we've used it all.
Well, that was actually a special, that's a rebate for um one of the special things, yeah, so it was me. It was the money we spent and they paid us back. Um, so the money we used to get, we used to be able to purchase services from the Willamette E S D and yet have some of our apportionment that they had for us and get it back, no more. We are purchasing back this year.
We used the whole thing.
We overspent.
We actually overspent and some of it's coming out of the general fund because it's immune in the schools.
So is it fair to say that you're purchasing eight hundred thousand dollars of the stuff, or is it eight hundred thousand would be more, or what you would have got back, so you were purchasing before like one point two?
I, I can give you those numbers and show you, because I actually, how much we actually were um given by the E S, you know, our allocation at E S B and how much that we spent, how much we transferred to the general fund, but it is functionally less than zero now. We actually purchased a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more of services than we had money for E S D. So that money is now in our general. Uh, so.
So we get, we get no benefit from, I mean, we get benefits, but it costs us a lot of money now for that benefit from E S D.
We, we have to, we would have to find psychologists and autisms and audiologists and we would have to find all of those people to, and we would have to pay them. The E S B has an easier time contracting with those folks than we do with.
But isn't that, isn't the reason for that just because of the makeup of our students in this district? I think we've talked about that before, where we spend more than the average Oregon district.
Right.
And that's why we're.
We'll talk about that too. Now we've got some numbers for you.
From a special education standpoint is what you're talking about, yes, yes. Most of our purchases for or out of the W E S D, what Willamette Education Service District, is for special education. Um, we do have nurses, so all, all, that's one of the key things, right? The, we have nurses in every building. That is a necessity. Uh, this past year we tried to do it with four. It has not, it's worked, but it's not working as best as we thought. So we need to put it back to what it was. As an example, that's a request coming from the buildings. Um, and so we're, we're um going to do that. But a majority of those that we hire are specific to special education. There's a few things here and there that are not, but majority of that is specifically for that.
Uh, so just one other thing, a lot of people are, you know, gee, I'm sure type cut supplies, so I just want to point out that on the, back on the expense side where it says four hundreds subtotals, you will see that supplies and materials for classrooms, for toilet paper, supplies and materials is less than four percent of our total operating budget. We cannot cut supplies enough to make a dent in the debt. So that category shows us under budget, just like, you know, a large portion of a part of the supplies and materials is computer software and a lot of our software licenses renew in June every year, so that number will go up. Not a big deal. On the next page of expenses, the one thing um I'll point out, uh, well, actually I should have pointed out the six hundreds subtotals. That's another very large expense. That's because that's where our insurance, property, casualty and liability insurance, so not the medical insurance we cover employees with. But our automobile insurance, property insurance is on that line. And you can see um that the, if you look in the purple column back in the day, uh, that cost us three hundred and thirty thousand and uh now we're up to over five hundred thousand, just in a couple of short years. And that is uh largely because not only property, if we all pay property insurance, we all know it's going up nationwide because of the tremendous natural disasters and losses. But uh school district liability insurance is increasing significantly because insurers are having to pay out more and more in claims for sexual abuse and misconduct in schools against students. So the risk for that kind of insurance has increased significantly. So I did not point that one out, but other transfers, which is the seven hundreds right below that, say where do we transfer money to? Um, the school bus leases that we pay out of debt service, we actually have to use general fund money to pay that because we get a, a portion of money each year from Oregon Department of Education. We get reimbursed for some of our transportation expenses. That comes into the general fund. We move it over to the debt service that they pay for. And uh we have a couple of other things we'll be talking about. We always have a contingency in there for nutrition services. Um, superintendent mentioned that child nutrition is a special revenue fund. It is funded currently almost one hundred percent by the federal government. However, it cannot run in the red. If they don't get enough of that revenue to cover costs, we have to cover that from the general fund. So we have always had a contingency amount set aside in the general fund to potentially transfer. And you'll see on an upcoming slide that we haven't had to do that in the thirteen years I've been here and one or two before that. But it is quite likely we will have to use some of that money this year and plan on that. Food costs, I think we all know, um, are contributing to that.
When you say it's required, is that like a, a state law or something, federal law?
Yeah, the food service account cannot run in the red.
And if they don't give us enough funds.
Even if they don't pay us enough to cover the cost.
And so some of the concerns around this are, and this is a question, a statement. The, at least the uh political talk at upward levels has indicated several times that the free reduced lunch program will be gone in America. And then, then our budget will have to be used to buy food for children.
Yep, we'll talk about federal funding challenges, but that is one of them, that the amount we are reimbursed to provide free and reduced lunches.
And a, our district is, does qualify as a property district?
Correct. Currently, right now, the last couple of years, every student in the central school district receives free breakfast and free lunch. We have enough um qualifiers district-wide. Some schools aren't quite there, some schools are over. And there's a formula to allow us to apply that district-wide. If the percentages that the federal formula uses change, that would change how many students in our district would qualify again, or which schools would qualify or not qualify. So that's for, yes.
Yeah, we're about that.
Sure.
So if we join that federal food program, then it can't go in the red. So if some school districts don't have it, which some don't, then they don't have to worry about it because they're not, yeah, you sign up for the program, it has to be a hundred percent, right?
If you sign up for the program, it cannot run in the red.
Well, what happens if, um, you know, the whole program gets cut, which.
Well, well, like every, you know, probably like everything else right now, um, everyone is looking at the state legislature and saying, are you gonna backfill this? Are you gonna back, if we lose all this federal funding for Head Start or any, all the groups that are losing federal funding, is the state gonna cover it? And I keep looking at Antonio, he works at the legislature, so I keep looking at him because he's sitting in rooms where this is being discussed all day, every day. And the state does not have enough money to backfill all the federal funding, like, and that includes.
Or the service level though is set at a hundred percent though right now. So the first thing we'd have to do is determine what service level we would need to, to, to provide to cover those who need it. Right now it's just, everybody gets it.
Right, correct, right. And as you'll hear us say multiple times tonight, all of these things are up in the air are why we are not actually presenting a proposed budget to you yet.
Yeah.
All right, so that's the general fund again. I would, I would gladly answer additional questions individually or.
And then just, Shannon for you, the referencing the operating contingency fund eight eleven right there. Um, again, that's tied to policy D B D B, it's called fund balance. So just so you have that, if you wanted, anyone wanted to look at that, it's our policy D B D B fund balance.
And that's, that's a carryover that we maintain every year. It's not, it's not an accumulation, so it's not every year we get and hold on to three hundred dollars. It's just, it's a carryover balance that we maintain, correct?
Yes.
Well, then why isn't it, why wasn't it in actuals?
Why wasn't it in?
Um, if it's a carryover, I mean, to be maintained, what happened in the actual?
So if, if we don't spend it, there was, if, the reason there are no expenditures actually in those contingency funds at the very, very bottom of your expense, it says um subtotal prior reserves and it has the eight hundred subtotals. In prior years, they're zero, because if we did spend it, we would move it up out of the contingency to a line item up above, so it would be zero out anyway. But at the end of the year, we never, we just haven't spent those. We haven't had to do that very often, fortunately.
So that five point three in the twenty-three, twenty-four would be a starting balance for twenty-four, twenty-
So that five point three in the twenty-three, twenty-four would be a starting balance for twenty-four, twenty-five?
Right. And the starting balance appears on the revenue.
Then that seven percent is as of lunch number?
It's actually seven percent of the, what I call the operating total, which is subtotal prior to reserves on the revenue.
Yeah. And are we, where are we at compared to the seven percent? Are we over that or?
Uh, we have ended up over seven percent fairly regularly. We are not scheduled to end up much over seven percent in the current year. And you'll see that we've got an input balance like.
Where do we see the beginning fund balance on page four?
The revenue, on the revenue page, which is the initial, our first page, the one pager, the very last line is called beginning fund balance. That is how much is carried over from the prior years.
Yeah, it goes down every year.
But we've carried way up more than seven percent.
Historically, we've been carrying more, but we've been having to spend more than we've been bringing in because.
Spending more than we make.
Historically, we've, we've set contingencies for the seven percent plus some deferred maintenance, plus some maybe set aside for future pers increases, plus some curriculum adoption, plus last year's budget this committee approved and was the board adopted wiped most of those out.
Have we shrunk that number? That, that contingency number used to be higher, wasn't it? Around a ten percent or something like that?
Uh, no.
No, 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 I think it was.
It was six and a half when I started and we moved it up to seven to be sure and cover payroll. No, it's the, the required board policy is, that's never, seven is the highest. So the next document, we won't spend nearly as much time, I promise. Um, another way that we look at budget, that, that you looked at is by account or expense type. It's what we're all used to looking at when we look at budgets, right? How much on salaries, how much on supplies, how much on equipment? This next way that we look at it, this single page here, and this is just a sample, is by program within the district. It's called function, for those of you who want to get all nerdy about school finance. So on this sheet, I pulled out some specific functions or programs that we offer in the general fund and compare what our budget is in the current year, twenty-four, twenty-five, to what we actually spent as recently as twenty-one, twenty-two. So the different colors, um, I will show you, so down at the bottom is sort of the narrative. The total general fund expenditures comparing our current year budget to the actuals increased a hundred and twenty-eight percent. If you look up at the white green, you will see that total direct instructional services. So again, not all the support, not all the, the extra stuff, but direct classroom instruction increased by about the same amount, a hundred and twenty-five percent. So that's, we were able to keep that level of funding directly for instructional services. But if you look at the three purples, those are the categories we use for direct instruction on gym, general education at the K five level, the middle school level and the high school level. They did not keep pace. We are at a hundred and fifteen percent. So only a fifteen percent increase over what we spent three years ago in general education. The next two line items are in yellow. They increased an average of a hundred and sixty-four percent. Those are special education purposes. So even though our direct instruction kept pace, that money has been redirected in the last three years. Um, just, uh, I know some folks are interested in alt ed, so I, I did include that one here. That's sort of the pinkish one down there next. Uh, that has increased and that, some of that is reprioritization. Um, our alt ed program, a lot of it used to be just having kids sit down at a computer and do online pedis. And uh, more of that now is coming out, uh, or sending students through the Warham and Career Academy, which is a program based in Salem. Uh, we fund some of that out of high school success, but of, of some of it out of the general fund. So that's increasing, but also shifting. I just know some folks are interested in that. So the next section, which starts and ends in blue, is support services. These are all the things that we do, including superintendent, fiscal, HR, payroll, some maintenance, um, all of those things are support services. And that overall increased only a hundred and ten percent. So our direct instruction increased a hundred and twenty-five percent over this period. Our support services have only increased a hundred and ten. Of that, larger increases in blue are in student safety and then speech, language pathology and translation and interpretation, both uh, language and uh, sign language interpretation and translation, so.
Can you explain some student safety examples?
What's that?
Can you explain some student safety examples for the difference?
Sure. Our student safety costs are almost exclusively, um, our school resource officers. We have a contract with the City of Independence for one point five FTE of school resource officer. Uh, but we also have had uh, some campus safety monitors. Uh, we have, we may have equipment purchases in there. Again, this is not just people, this is all expense types under that program. But the significant portion of that is our contract with Independence Police.
Cease. What is the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five bump about? Because we actually are like ninety-two percent of that for the adopted budget twenty-four, twenty-five.
And I'm sorry, and what was that? Oh, for the.
In twenty-two, twenty-three, the K five instruction went up significantly, even higher than what we adopted this year.
Yeah. Um, I'll get, I'll get back to exactly what some of that was.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, let me, let me take a looks like, yes, take a guess. Yes.
So on the, on the purple up here, on the, where we're at a hundred and fifteen percent, is that the projection for what, where we're going to end? Or is that going to continue to grow right now?
Uh, I, we don't have the proposed budget for you, so I can't tell you what it's going to be next year. That is our current year budget versus what we actually spent three years prior.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
It, it's basically fifteen percent?
I mean, I assume it's going to be about, like, more of our costs are going to special education.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and some of the others on here in the support services, nothing, I mean, there's some the, you can read the notes, Sarah, you don't need to go through each line item. But it, it shows, for example, where insurance, I talked about property casualty liability insurance. Some of that is under the Board of Education. Um, and some of it is under fiscal services. Vehicle operation has increased significantly. That is our transportation department. Um, and interestingly, we are way under staffed in that department. We are way short in staffing. So our salaries are not increasing in that department. And we can't hire temp agencies to run it. We are hiring outside services to transport our students to special programs in Salem or Valles. We, we are required, um, if we have homeless students who are buying some place to crash here in our community, but they went to school in Newport, we are required by law to transport them home to Newport to keep a stable school environment. So, uh, those costs, uh, after the pandemic, a lot of folks became homeless. A lot of folks have been disrupted, are living with relatives or finding places where they can get shelter. If it is not here in this community, we want to keep them connected to those communities where they have friends and supports. And if they request it, we transport them there. Since we're short-staffed ourselves, we hire uh, transport companies to. So that, that's just a couple of ways to look at our general fund. Good, maybe too much detail, too much information. But if you want more, if you have more questions about this or want to dig in, I will be glad to get them. That brings us to the budget message. So also in the packet that you received by email, that also included back in that first packet, that front packet is your um, written copy of budget message for next year and.
Yes, I'm going to read it into, because we're required to read it in. Um, we do have some slides that go with it, so Cecil will sort of go along with me, but we can always come back if there's questions just generally as we start this process. So this is the formal letter that we do share out. So it reads, Dear Central School District Committee, Community, funding is essential to growing student success. It determines levels of service for students, directly affecting student outcomes. From paying educators to paying the electric bill and other utilities, including garbage, water and internet. Money keeps education going. We will continue our focus on the whole child, where students are healthy, safe, engaged and supportive and challenged academically, behaviorally, socially and emotionally. We will continue to review, align and develop systems, practices and programming to support our educational learning environments. We will continue to center our work in equity. Our focus continues to be in our strategic plan and long-term goals and outcomes as we build an inclusive culture of belonging and learning for the success of the whole child, whole educator and whole community. The board and staff of Central School District remain focused on the four pillars of the strategic plan, student growth and achievement, family involvement, community partnership and staff leadership and continuous improvement, improvement. Factors that are in the, in the coming by income. Uh, we will begin bargaining for both CEA and OSEA with a fiscal impact beginning in two thousand twenty-six and twenty-seven. This includes agreements with administrative and cons, and as well as confidential supervisory groups. The needs of our special education students are increasing, increasing, as are the number of students in special programs. The state-run retirement system rates are increasing by an average of fifty-five percent, which is contributing to a cost increase of one point three seven million. The governor's proposed budget for the state school fund, which is eleven point four?
Thirty-six.
Well, the governor's three-six, yes. The ways and means is three point four, is a nine percent higher than the state school fund for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-five by income. And that should say billion, not million.
Yeah.
We will correct that. Due to our current enrollment projections, look backs and attendance, the initial increase to our share of the state school fund is expected to be a four point one one percentage point increase from last year's budgeted general fund. Contracted increases in wages and benefits will average six percent for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, things we're proud of. Even with tighter budgets, we are able to provide each school with continued support through mental health counseling. We have kept four nurses and as I shared before, we're reinstating a fifth. Our graduation rates increased specifically for our Latinx and special education students who saw high, higher graduation rates than we've seen in previous years. Our students continue to maintain their reading skills through the summer months, K five. We're seeing growth in sixth grade and eighth grade reading as well as math. We are seeing amazing growth in our English language proficiency, specifically K five. This means that more of our emergent bilingual students are becoming proficient in English. Uh, and again, that skill is reading, writing, speaking and listening. We are above the state average in this area by twenty-three percentage points. Uh, the culture and climate experience surveys, we continue to do for our staff, families and students. We continue unique learning experiences for our students, including two-way immersion program, participation, Warham and Career Academy and career and technical education pathways. Our priorities for the district, math curriculum. We put off purchasing the board-approved math curriculum for grades K through twelve. We have seen the difference updated curriculum makes. We need to make the investment in our students to purchase the math curriculum this year. Uh, technology updates. The district is waiting for approval of a grant for one point three million for our technology infrastructure and have submitted a second grant for four hundred thousand to continue upgrades. Continue to support special education and the needs of our students, which includes special education staff and summer school and our mental health programs and facilities maintenance. Struggles that continue, because attendance and enrollment are down, we need to make cuts district-wide. We will not fill positions created by retirement and resignations. We will assign staff where, we will reassign staff where possible, but we may have to make more cuts. We will carefully consider all purchases where general funds are needed. We know that we will need supplies for classroom events, but we'll encourage savings where possible. We do not know yet how our federal funds will be affected as lawmakers in Washington DC continue to work through how those will be distributed. We will have, excuse me, we will have to reduce some programming, including kindergarten jumpstart. Uh, insurance, including workers' compensation, has increased more than expected. A school district's budget is a statement of both the values of the organization and that of the community, along with a reminder of those values. Please note that the following requirements are set forth in ORS chapter two nine four, that we explain the budget document, the financial policies, in, important aspects of the budget in connection with policies, the reason for changes in appropriation and revenue, and note major changes in financial policy and the accounting basis. There has been no change to the district's accounting basis and no major changes to financial policies. This budget will reflect adjustments to revenue expenditures based on the district's strategic plan assumptions and reflect additional investments as outlined above. I'm confident that the board, students, staff, parents and community of Central School District will continue to work together as we focus on student growth and achievement. I remain appreciative of the work of this budget committee in consideration of our efforts. Respectfully submitted Jennifer Cavista, Superintendent of Central School District. Now, I will tell you, we have received that grant for the tech. It just, we didn't, we got that, that's hot off the press. The board doesn't even know that because I just got it today.
The one point three?
The one point three we got.
Okay.
So that, I didn't want to change the budget message, we were already in it, so we did get that. Now we just wait for the next cap, that's, um, that's through an E-rate process through the federal government. Um, it's called category one. Uh, we can help build our infrastructure. We also submitted one for category two, which is a much, it's smaller, about four hundred thousand. Um, but that's for equipment. So being able to really rebuild our whole infrastructure over the next year is going to be. So we're just waiting for the second part of that, but we have received uh, the first part of that grant.
Couple of things that haven't been shared with people is the amount of money the, the state budgets for us, for special education.
We're going to talk about that. That's our next step. We got you.
Right.
Yeah.
And then the other one was where we're at actually, that number.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you go back to the, a grant? Can you explain a little bit more of like, will that cover all of the structures that you need to do replacements?
They agree.
No, so the, the first category is literally building a new line specifically just for central school districts. So, um, that's going to be more underground work, above groundwork of an actual, just a uh, loop is what it's called for, um, running internet, et cetera.
Like hybrid answering ground?
Yeah.
For the one point three?
Yep.
So that's not the actual like servers themselves or anything like that?
So servers are not covered under either of these categories, but you'll hear us talk about switches and other equipment items that help with wifi, wifi's uh, equipment. That falls under category two, that is the one that we are waiting for.
And so do we anticipate more stuff that needs to be fixed, like with the servers that went down and such? Or?
Yeah, yes, that is. We're, you know, continuing to see where we might be able to get some grant funding. But again, you'll see at times we don't really touch our. technology, um, budget item, because we are still always trying to replace and, and upgrade as much as possible.
Is that on the plan for next year, or when we talk about?
No, that, right at this moment, we do not have within that, that servers would be on there, because that's really the big item. That would be the next big item that we need to, to purchase. We have servers that are functioning, um, but we just have a lot of them. You know, we could move to a, a state-of-the-art three servers. That would be much more manageable. We're trying to get there, but the real focus is on the equipment. So we have better infrastructure in the schools for staff and students to do what they need to do on a daily basis.
I hear the question about the grant. Um, you said that you, we got the grant.
Yep, the first part.
Uh, uh, do we have, have the actual dollars?
In hand? No, not yet.
Well, okay, so.
On paper. It's, it's approved, so yeah.
It's, it's not actually part of the federal budget. It goes through a federal process, but it's not part of the federal budget, so we're.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
But we're very excited about that. Correct. Um, I think that just, again, as we've talked about, just the uncertainty, some of the things that we're, we're working through um, with the funding. We have not identified all cuts because we know what we know right now. Um, and are trying to get to a balanced budget, but I think there's still a lot of, um, you know, the week of, or the middle of May, May fourteenth, when the next revenue forecast comes out, that's gonna be a big part of, of decision-making. That's again, part of the reason why we're not presenting a budget to you today. Um, so we are trying to absorb those cuts, whether it be retirement or people moving on. Um, what we, so we're working through that, and, um, we haven't determined about who all this will impact. I will say, we have been working very closely, and I'm very appreciative as partners with us, uh, both OSEA number one twenty-four and CEA, which are our two union. Uh, the leadership of both of those, we met with last week. We're meeting with them again this week as we continue to work through what those cuts might look like, uh, moving forward. So we, um, again, I'm appreciative for their, um, leadership and partnership as we, as we go through this.
Do you know, do you know when, you'll know which ones they'll actually be, because like, last year, we removed people and did a cut as well.
We, that is our, we are trying to do that again.
Yeah, but that was like, ended up being like a CTE, a CTE, a teacher that served five hundred students. And so like, knowing that impact, I think will be helpful for the.
Yeah, we, we, I, I will not, we will have to be careful about what we share with you all, because it identifies people. Uh, we will do it probably more in a bigger FTE approach, um, but all those conversations are happening with buildings. Um, we've given them information. They've come back to us on, uh, different levels of what they could see and, and have cut. We continue those conversations, not only with, we mean, but with building principal, um, as well.
I, I guess, maybe I didn't get this quite right. Enrollment increased this year.
Did not. We're gonna go through that.
Oh, I, I thought we were talking enrollment earlier, so.
Nope.
Yeah, something coming up here.
So again, just another slide to look at some of the things that we're looking at. What are the rising costs? Obviously, the, as we talk about limited revenue, again, that's really talking about state dollars. Um, there's less special revenue, and then we, we don't know right now. I, federal, the federal funding is over here. I'm not even having that conversation yet, because I don't, I don't know what I don't know. And so, um, we've tried to, any people that we could, or most of our people, we've moved out of federal funding, so we don't have that. Um, it'll just be other pieces if we have to move in that direction. And then obviously, the declining enrollment, which we're gonna talk through next in our, our demographics, so you can see that. I think the important part on the declining enrollment is currently our attendance, uh, percentage for, again, as a regular attendee, your, the student has to be ninety percent of the time present in the school. Sixty-two of our, percent of our kids do that. That's five percentage points less this time last year. The last year at this time, we were at sixty-seven percent currently for the number of kids that are attending ninety percent of the time. We only have sixty-two percent of them attending.
And the formula is enrollment, waited for attendance. So if we had five thousand kids and not all of them, and only sixty-two percent of them are regular attenders, we don't get paid for five thousand. And we've got some very specific graph, graphs coming up.
Yep. So we're gonna jump into demographics a little bit here, so you can see, um, and Cecil and I are gonna go back and forth a little bit, um, with this. So the first, uh, line you'll see, we are showing you the enrollment, which is in blue. So that's who has been enrolled in our school. And then, as Cece has referenced, it's called the ADMR, which is, um, waited for attendance.
Average daily membership, waited for attendance.
So one of the things I want to point out, um, when I first arrived as a superintendent, um, with the board's approval, we did a, worked with a consulting company called Flow Analytics, and they gave us, uh, really a trajectory of what our enrollment would be um, as an example. Um, so you can see on this graph, you can see where, again, our enrollment is, how our ADM has been. Um, you can see, if you go all the way to the far right, where we're looking at the twenty-three, twenty-four fall, and then obviously where we are currently at, you can see that orange has dropped, um, pretty dramatically, and that's the attendance piece. Um, we have been running, as an example, um, close to the, um, what I'm gonna say, Flow Analytics, when we did it, gave me a, here's what your enrollment would be if it was high, here's a medium, and here's a low. We've been running right below the high of what they've had projected for us, um, pretty significantly and, and done a good job. This past year is when we have seen, um, really that, those, those big drops. Um, and, and are having to, to work through that. Just to give you an example, our current enrollment right now, um, as of Friday was twenty-nine eighty-six.
And in October, it was thirty-three thousand fifty.
Yep. So right now, as we look at going into the twenty-sixth school year, we are just below what the Flow Analytics had us as medium. I've been running just below high, so we've had a pretty dramatic drop. Um, and about really in the last year and a half, uh, from, from that, that perspective.
So to, to simplify this, you could say we're incurring the cost of three thousand fifty students, but only getting reimbursed for twenty-nine hundred eighty-six of them.
Correct. Yeah.
Because of attendance.
Correct. Yes. Um, the other piece I would say is, um, our kinders are smaller. So our kinder classes over the last two years, um, with what Flow Analytics had us estimated at, um, they have dropped dramatically, uh, as much as twenty percent. Um, again, part of that is the birth rates are not as high as what they projected, so that is going to impact that. Um, so we have seen, um, yep, we've seen smaller, um.
What's your kinder? What do you, what grade's your kinder you call it?
I'm sorry, say that again.
What, what grades are you, are you called kinder?
Right, kindergarten, little kindergarten.
Only, not the first grader.
Nope, not the first graders, just kindergarten. So we saw, so in the last couple of years, we've seen, uh, a pretty dramatic drop in what we've had in the past, you know? We've had about two hundred to two hundred and fifty, we're getting about a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and ninety per year. So that, that makes, that's probably the largest, that, that, that's the one of the biggest areas where we've had a, a decrease in our enrollment, from that perspective.
Couple, couple of questions on this graph. What's the break-even attendance that would be? Say we have thirty-three thousand fifty, what's the attendance percentage that would equal that thirty-fifty number?
A hundred of them, percent of them have to come ninety.
So on the years that were higher than the actual enrollment, that's from preceding years?
No, and what that is, is a difference in the measurement. So the fall October enrollment is October first, how many kids are enrolled? They don't, we don't calculate that waited-for attendance until January. So in January, if the orange number was higher, it's because we actually had more kids enroll between October and January. So that, that is why that weird anomaly where we had a lot more kids in January, and we had good attendance, uh, prior to twenty-twenty. So those two factors.
And we are projected, just so, again, based off of the analytics that they've done, we are projected to decrease for the next, um, two, three years.
And we are not alone.
Correct.
Birth rates are declining, public school enrollment is declining statewide, nationwide. Um, and the attendance also. We are not alone. This is a system-wide concern.
So I have a question about that. I don't know if you have a, a slide that talks about that or not, because all the news articles you hear, every school district is talking about how their enrollment is down in the state as a whole. So if there was a hundred thousand kids in the state of Oregon, and now there's only ninety thousand, would it be ninety thousand divided by the eleven point three six million or billion?
Eleven point three six billion divided by, you know.
Yeah, so like, if all the school districts are down, that, and we're down, we just don't have to be down at a, a greater rate than the overall school, I mean, the overall student, am I thinking?
Hundred percent. That is the way the funding formula works. If we were, if, if there was a certain percentage drop in ADMR statewide, and we were at that exact same percentage, it wouldn't affect our funding.
And, and we don't know where we are in comparison to the overall state right now? Cause, and, uh, no, cause like, I heard Dallas, they're like down by five hundred, you know? If we look at our high, we're down by like four hundred, so hey, we're down less than Dallas.
Yes, we, we are dramatically less than some of our counterparts around us.
And so just trying to figure out, like.
Yeah.
Even though it, all the school districts are concerned that, uh, the numbers are down, we're not gonna get as much of the state school fund, but if every school is down, then we might still get the same. So like, how do we know?
The, the initial projections that we are getting show us losing.
Yeah.
Losing funding.
So we're down at a greater percentage in the overall state of Oregon?
And I think some, again, from a financial perspective, when we show you some of the next slides, right? Our costs for special education are eating at the general fund. We usually have, you know, again, we've been able to in the past, we always have general fund, because that's always gonna support every kid across the school district. But our costs for special education continue to rise pretty dramatically, and we're gonna show more of that here next. Other questions about this, yes?
Yes, we're sorry. Uh, do we get any money for the kids to stay at home?
No.
Do we get, okay, that's what I wanted to know. I thought one time we did get something, or we were responsible for some of that or something.
And I will tell you, our homeschool, when I first got here, um, as the superintendent, we had over, we had per year about two hundred and fifty to three hundred kids homeschooled. That has dropped dramatically. That's about a hundred, on average now, about a hundred and fifty throughout the year. I think where we've seen the shift is to online schools.
Right.
So we've had in the past about a three percentage, uh, we're almost at six percent of kids that opt out to online.
There, there are online public schools now throughout the state, um, that some of them have, are hybrid. They actually, there, I, there is a school in Salem. There's a building, there's tutors, there's people that are there to provide services, but their students are enrolled at a school district in eastern Oregon. So the school district in eastern Oregon gets all of the funding for those students, enough that they can rent a place in Salem, among other places around the state, that the kids can come in for tutoring and activities. And several of our students are there. Or just one. There's lots of online school districts.
Yeah.
So they get the same amount personally we do, they don't provide the same amount of services.
Is that data available, the AMR, ADMR available? Like, that we could compare our district to a few other spot checks around the state or in the state?
Certainly, we could do, we could do a couple, so you can see the difference of that.
Kinda, yeah, give us a feeling for it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Other questions for this one, and then otherwise we're gonna keep us moving.
Hi.
Evidently, students are looked at a, several, we look at several different ways, whether they, um, whether they actually physically attend their classes, or whether they're enrolled. Is that, is that basically what this, um, is, is about?
Yes. Blue is, is enrolled, or orange or red, orange or, is how much time are they sitting in their class?
Okay, alright.
As we take it, at the secondary schools, we're taking attendance every period. At the elementaries, we take it twice a day to capture, capture student enrollment, or how many are they in the seats? You don't know the next one? Okay, so, and we can go back. So the next one, we just wanted to show you, this is our actual enrollment of our, uh, students experiencing disabilities. So you can see, we were, starting seventeen, eighteen, been fairly, I'm gonna say flat, uh, you know, a little bit up and down, but you can see over the last couple of years that that has increased. So.
Why is that?
To be very honest.
Yeah.
Um, I think, one, um, we're known to be very supportive of, uh, in this school district for students, uh, with, uh, disability. I also know that we per capita have the most, uh, I reference them as youth care facilities. So facilities that have students that may have high-impact needs. Uh, don't live with their family anymore. They live in a, again, it's been referred to in the past as group homes. Uh, we have, uh, I believe nine. Plus, we have adult homes, so we also are required for students with experiencing disabilities from the age of eighteen to twenty-one, we still service. So our transition program is actually physically in this building, and about, I don't know, twenty, fifteen, twenty kids that are uh, in the program. So they're also potentially could be in an adult care facility. Um, so we have a lot of both youth and adult care facilities that are within this community. If you don't know that, I don't know how, because it is one of the things that I think is great about our community. Um, we do have a lot of, um, uh, families that do have, uh, students that are experiencing a disability. But again, I think we're known, some people may disagree, but, um, for giving a quality education for uh, students that have disabilities all the way through twenty-one.
But more and more and more children are being identified with high-impact disabilities. What's our kindergarten number next?
Normally, we have, um, smaller amounts, but we have in the upper thirties now of, um, used to be handfuls of, uh, students coming down with a disability. I know so far, we've got list the last time I was, it's thirty, or starting to continue to move up in that area.
And so when you're seeing the earlier identification, that means that we have those typically can see a lot of those students could continue with services.
Yeah.
Or a period of time at least, but not for all.
And, and we try not to identify that early. So the fact that they're being identified early just means that we know that there's gonna be needs for, for the students.
There's spikes in certain areas, accent language.
Speech.
Across the state, it's gonna, yeah, across it.
Yeah.
How, how do we rank statewide i- in this category? We, are we high in, and are we more students for, for our students are in the high-risk area or?
Uh, I, that's a hard one, because I think at times we're dealing with you, one, we're seeing the needs of, of, again, when it comes to autism or, or other things, right? You're seeing that across all school districts. I do think there's some unique things that we see because of the, who we serve from that perspective. So I don't know that I have specifically key areas, but, um.
I just wonder what the percentage was for students that are on disability or something.
Uh, we're, so we're about, uh, we go between fourteen and fifteen percent of our, of overall population.
Are they totally acceptable?
Yeah, and so we're, but, but, which is about the national average. But I think at times, costs continue to go up with the, the needs that we're serving.
These trends, the students experiencing disabilities is going up and your enrollments going down.
Yes.
So it further exacerbates any pressures.
Well, then we're going to, so I think you'll then enjoy this next slide. And we're going to, to, to get to that one.
Real quick, I was just wondering, are we seeing families move to this district because of the services we provide?
Yes.
And the group, and the care facilities.
Yeah, yes. I would also say that. Yeah, I would also say that the Oregon Department of Education has shared with me that they, if parents ask them, what's good school districts? We are on that top list of services for kids.
I, I look at the Department of Education website, like Vinville was 15%, we were 14%, and Dallas was 18%. That's like three districts I looked at. So we're relatively all similar.
This, this is where it changes.
Yeah. Except for, I don't know that they have as many group or childcare facilities as we do.
Right, in Dallas.
Yeah, I don't think they have very similar, I don't think either of those communities have the youth care facilities that we have.
And there's, there's a difference between a child whose needs are some extra help and reading.
Yeah.
And a child whose disability in terms of self-control is so extreme that we have to have two assistants.
Or three.
Child, or, or three. Or three. And I think that that has impacted our, our budget significantly. And so when the category is just special education, but it doesn't indicate the high-need child, I, I mean, I don't know what.
That number is just, Jen, that number is just the percent.
Oh, okay.
Right, so it's.
I think what Jen's talking about is acuity. How do you quantify the acuity?
Yes.
Yes.
With services that the individual needs.
Yes, well, that's why, that, that's why people are contracted.
At times, right, yes, that's why our, those costs are up.
And they're very expensive.
Yeah.
Yes. So this next slide focuses on our highest-need students.
Yeah, so let's just go through, let's just go through the graph first. So blue is actual cost, and we're going to come, come back to this. So blue is actual cost, and if you look on the left side, you'll see 200,000, 700,000, all the way up to 3.7 million. So the blue is the actual cost that we have spent, which is called a high-cost disability. So we're going to talk through that. So that's the first blue line is actual cost. Then the orange line is allowed costs. So we are, we are really pay the first 30,000 for any student. And I'm just going to remind everyone that an average student brings in about?
11.
11,000. So we have to do the 30 before we can even get the reimbursement. So for every kid we spend over 30, then we can be reimbursed. You will see, the yellow is the total reimbursement. So I'll just give you an example. Two years ago, we got, for every dollar that we spent, we got 56 cents on the dollar. That was three years ago. Last year, we got 40 cents on the dollar. This year, we started, our first look back that we got, which I publicly shared with the House Education Committee when I went to testify, was 28 cents on the dollar. That has been refigured, and it is now at about 39 cents.
33.
33, excuse me, you're right, 33 cents, excuse me, from that perspective, again. So you can see how much our cost, so I think total for this year, the 3.7 million, we got how much back?
Uh, the, the 3.7 is, if we get a premium for this year, uh, 700,000. That's the yellow, that's just the seven, just over the seven.
So we think that's just really important. Plus, then you see the gray line dots, the number of students that would fall into that category. So you're seeing the, the high cost, we saw a little bit of a jump to 40 in 2019, and saw a little bit of a dip, but we've worked our way back up.
So of the 477 students on the previous slide, 46 of them cost us more than $30,000 per student to support. That first 30,000, we're expected to pick up. Over the 30,000, there is a separate grant, a separate pot of money at the state to reimburse districts. But because the need throughout the state is so high, that reimbursement rate is so low. You'll see a little bit of a spike in the yellow in 2021. The state recognized this, the legislature recognized this, and they increased the funding for this grant. They said, wow, these number, you're only getting reimbursed 40, 50 cents on the dollar. They increased the amount of money, but what's happened since then is more and more and more districts have more and more and more students with higher and higher and higher needs, and the cost of serving those needs is higher. So that's why the funding level has fallen that day. So for fiscal year 2324, we were able to identify 3.7 million dollars for these 46 students. And we're being reimbursed 700,000.
If you look at the percentage change, if you go back two years, we were around 12%, we're at 14% as far as number, percentage of special education. So there's only a 2% increase, but if you look at the high-cost increase, it's about 65% increase. So that's, that's really where this is impacting us, that we're not seeing a lot more students, but we're seeing a lot more students that are caught, that, that to serve, to provide the services costs a great deal more, so it's a huge jump.
But we have some ways that we even think you can help us advocate, if you would like. We'll talk about that here in a second, from that perspective. So any other questions about this? I'm going to show you one more slide, demographics, before we move on as we continue forward here. So the last slide is just, we wanted to give, just show you the number of emergent bilinguals. So these are students that are coming in, and they will be as they walk out with us, potentially having two languages within our school system. So this is just the numbers that you've seen over the past couple of years. Again, I would say for the last three or four, we've been pretty consistent. We've had a little bit, but again, in that 500 range, a little mid-500s, upper 500s is what our numbers are, or students that will be able to walk out with two languages. I think this is the greatest growth area, the fact that we have our K5s, right? We, especially young students, our goal is that if we can have them having both dual languages walking into middle school, that's going to be an advantage for them. And the fact that our K5s are, their, their growth is at 70%, that's huge. I mean, the fact that we're 23 percentage points above the state average, we're doing the right things to support kids as their learning moves, moves forward. So I just wanted to share that, a little bit of graph with you from that perspective.
Does that include students that are English as a primary language? Or is that only the other way around, where it's, if English is a secondary language, learn English?
English is a secondary language, they're, they're learning English.
Okay, so this, this graph is for?
Yes. And again, we, we have 19 different languages. That's what's surprising to people within the school district, a couple that are our majority. But again, we have great leadership that, and the buildings are doing really good work. Our, our language arts curriculum, and then we also adopted a, what's called an English language development curriculum. Watching staff, you, I was in an elementary the other day. Watching staff build that together is pretty powerful. That's really good strategies for any kid. So it's, I think it's helping every kid that's in our, in our buildings right now.
Did you want to take, where, these next slides shouldn't take very long, because we've given you a lot of this information already, kind of the assumptions we're using as we go forward. I don't, I didn't talk for a few-minute break, but just let people go.
Should, yeah, I think, unless anybody's opposed that, I'd propose you all take an eight-minute break, just so we can.
Yep, we're almost there.
Almost where?
To the end.
Quick break.
But let's take a quick break now, so if you guys could be back at 7:50.
Don't look at any clocks in this.
7:50, that would be perfect.
Uh, restroom's down the hall around the corner, they're on your right, just as you turn the corner to the left. Uh, restroom's down the hall around the corner. They're on your right, just as you turn the corner to the left. Yes, so the next thing, kind of telling you a little bit about the assumptions we are using uh to to build the budget, so that we will have something for you. We'll talk about our timeline also. Go ahead.
Yeah, so um as of the last two months, we are basing, going to be basing our budget off the eleven point four. So assured earlier, the governor's budget is eleven point three six. The Ways and Means Committee has come out and said eleven four. So we're being advised to do off of, to budget off of the eleven point four. You will see that that's an eleven point seven percent increase from the last biennium, so the twenty-three, twenty-five biennium, which is great. Um, we're estimating at this point that our state school fund would be a little over thirty-four million. So that's a four percent increase for us um over the last year. Um, again, as we shared on the budget message, this is uh really focused on our four strategic goals. You'll see there was um legislation that would finally pass, which we are very happy about. That um the first year, we get forty-nine percent of the state school fund. Um, and then the second year is the fifty-one. At times, that would shift around, that would.
Do fifty.
Fifty-fifty, that can be very difficult for us, so having a little bit of flexibility going into the second year is much appreciated. Um, again, as he said, the food services, we're concerned about that. Um, it's been quite some time that we haven't had to work through that, so we're hoping we don't have to, but it is on the horizon that we're just paying attention to. Um, and then our debt service levy amount is projected to be at two dollars per thousand um due to that twenty-twenty-three repayment.
Yeah, I catch it. You said two dollars?
Correct.
Two dollars is what are, what we're looking at for the coming year, but that's all based on what the property values might be.
Right, yeah.
Just a, a projection at this point, you know.
So, looking forward, I think there's just a couple things that we want to identify for you all. Um, and sort of the reason why we have not given you up the budget for this um, this date. So, there are two bills, and this is if you feel like you want to advocate. Um, we have really good um people that you can reach out to, so in our, just so you know, in case you don't know, uh Senator Patterson and Representative Evans are two of our local representatives, but if you have an interest in reaching out to the Senate Education Committee or the House Education Committee, um, there are two bills that would increase funding for special ed. One is House Bill two-nine-five-three, uh which would lift the cap of the numbers of students funded. So as we've talked, our um special education percentage is between fourteen and fifteen percent, but that cap, we only get eleven percent. That cap has not been raised since nineteen ninety-ish, so we're, we're just asking them to please move that direction.
But there has to be more money with it, or it won't do us any good.
The general fund, it needs to be an additional amount. Um, the other house bill is House Bill two-four-four-eight. Again, we just walked you through the high costs of students. That is also another funding that we're asking um them to increase that cost.
Reimbursement.
That reimbursement cost. I love that to be hundred percent, dollar for dollar, but I'd be happy if they could get us to seventy-five or eighty cents on the dollar. Um, so if you want to do advocacy, that is up to you, um but that, those are areas, then you're gonna see that.
I just give you a little bit of a taste of that. For the twenty-four, twenty-five, that, that high-cost disability grant amount is fifty-five million dollars to divide up all over the state for every district.
All hundreds ninety-six.
Uh-huh. The additional expenditures, so the amount over the third, three, thirty thousand per kid, based just on what we all think we have this year, what we're doing, one hundred and forty-one million four hundred thousand dollars of need and a fifty-five million dollar. So that's where we get to.
Forty-three cent.
Correct. Um, and that last one is the, that's early childhood, so ECEI, ECSE. Um, that's investment for early, early uh students that are identified having a disability. We know that if the services come in early, that's helpful as they transition into kindergarten. Um, you'll also see House Bill thirty-four, thirty-five, which is school meals for all, so because we don't know what's gonna happen at the federal level, there is a big push uh for that. We actually have put in narrative, we were requested to put in narrative. Um, Alex, who's our school dude, um or school food dude, school food dude. Um, he does an excellent job, and so um he put some, some materials to give to the um House and Senate for us to, to share about that. Uh, summer learning did pass. We um are in the process of.
Friday afternoon.
Yeah, tomorrow we have our first meetings. Uh, we will go and get um, apply for the uh summer learning grant, so um that, we will have summer school again this year.
We were allocated, this is a state formula, and out of all, all the districts were ranked. As to poverty and other factors, we were ranked sixty-fourth, so our funding amount, if we choose to accept it, is four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to run summer programs this year, which is fantastic.
This is why we don't have, part of the reason why we don't have summer slide. Just saying that we will, as long as that money keeps going, we will continue to try and support.
Isn't that a little more than what we got last year?
Last year we got seven hundred and fifty-five, and we got it in June, and we had to spend it by September thirtieth, and we spent every dime. But every school advocated to legislature and said, actually, in order to build programming and hire people and have parents know to enroll their children, you've gotten given to us earlier. The pot was much smaller this year.
Did it go in a different bill? Ten thirty-three nine?
No, it was seven thirty-three nine. Was it a House Bill thirty-three nine? I thought it was.
I don't know.
It passed, I know that. I, I know I have an email that says.
The governor signed it last year, we know that.
Um, House Bill thirty-fourty, which is the early literacy initiative, here's the, here's the part about this that is interesting. So currently, for this initiative, right now, they have us projected at about two hundred and thirty, excuse me, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. However, with the governor's budget, if that's approved, it's a little over four hundred thousand. So just to give you an example, right now, we're budgeting at two thirty-nine, but it could be as high as four hundred. And so that's some of the stuff right now, that, that's a person, right? That's a person that, you know, potentially, what are we, what are we gonna do if we don't get that? So those are some of the things that, just the waiting period of just trying to get that final number of what actually will be uh moving forward. That's one of those pieces. Thirty, fifty-nine?
No.
Three thirty-nine. Um, then we have, uh Senate Bill.
No, sorry. Now, that's a study bill. It's fifty forty-seven is the current.
Fifty forty-seven. Thank you. And then, uh Senate Oh Five Eighty, uh there's a bill that um potentially would be band-aiding class size as a subject of bargaining. I will tell you, we already have a class size protocol. We work very closely with the unions. We work very hard to stay underneath those numbers. We do think class sizes will go up this next year. We need to right-size a little bit of that, because classes have been a little bit small. Um, but we do work very hard to stay in that. I, again, I know why people want this passed. I don't think you need to pass it, but, because I think you can do that within school districts, but maybe school districts don't think like us, that you should be working with your unions to, to really have those things in place. Um, but we, we have done some really good work from that perspective. Um, and again, there's still an expected kicker of one point seven. Um, and then really, the big number that we're waiting for is uh May fourteenth. But we, we're, we're gonna get you a budget sooner than May fourteenth, based off of the assumptions that we have, because, because we want to be able to give that to you before that. I'll be honest, there will probably, we'll come here, we'll have the meeting with you, go over that budget, but probably we'll need, we'll talk a little bit more about what those next steps will look like.
It's funny, another bill that didn't make the slide on Friday um is a bill that actually helps us. The uh PERS had a pot of money that uh they, the, the, this legislature just chose to use to reduce the rates for school districts only or next year only.
One time.
One-time money, so we mentioned in an earlier slide, our PERS rate for the next biennium was between fifty and fifty-seven percent. Two rates, one's fifty, one's fifty-seven percent increase, not basis points, percentage. This pot of money is anticipated, and I have to go through all their actuarial stuff, to reduce our rate by one point six eight basis points. So it could save us potentially even three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the general fund. And all of our funds will benefit. Food Service, their PERS cost will be a little lower. All of our funds, the personnel cost will be a little bit lower because of this one this year, all coming year, all.
Doesn't seem like a lot, but when you're trying to balance a budget, it's a big important part. Um, any part of that.
Just got signed in.
Yeah.
Friday, Thursday. Um, now the actuaries have to do all their magic, and the PERS board has to adopt that new rate schedule in June to tell us for sure what our new rates will be to give a budget.
So it had to take legislation, or it can do it themselves?
No, had to take legislation.
You don't remember anything?
To figure out how much to give the money.
I could, I'll get it. Yes, I'll find it. Um, before you leave. So that, just next slide, just federal landscape. And again, I'm not, we're not gonna spend enough time on this, because it's still very out, out there. Not sure. Again, we're, there's looking at various programs and legal mandates. We know that some of that's uncertain. Um, we, we, they're finishing resolutions that provide level funding. So I will be honest, a couple months ago, we were being told huge cuts in title. Um, we have advocated, our representatives have advocated. Um, I think people don't realize what that impacts. You're talking kids in poverty, you're talking uh students experiencing disabilities, so it will not be, again, could be uh between a five percent, maybe high ten percent decrease, because it's level funding, so they're not gonna add. But when you roll up costs, um, you know, we'll see some of that, and that, again, obviously, our fiscal year ends September of twenty twenty-five. So we haven't seen even first numbers of what federal funding will be. Um, so I say that because that could change. Um, that could impact greatly um the budget, because we do have several million in, in federal funding um as a school district. So just sort of next steps for what, where we're gonna take place, again, you wanna go through this? I'll let you go through this a little bit.
Sure. Uh, for those of you who are new, sort of the roles, uh the administration's role. Uh, we present a proposed budget to you, the budget committee, have our best shot. Um, and then at, in an advisory capacity, answering your questions, trying to get um that budget to be something that represents all of the goals and values we've talked about. The budget committee um actually does the appropriation. The budget committee approves the total amount of the budget and our tax terms. So we will opt for those and have to approve those. The board then appropriates or distributes that money to different types of expenditures. Um, and that's, that has to, all of this has to be done, and then the board has to adopt this budget by June thirty. Your options will be, as we go through this, to approve the budget that we propose to you, to increase the appropriation. If you all say, oh, you, you people are being too conservative and crazy, there's a lot more money coming to schools, you would have the choice to tell us to spend it. You could decrease and say, nope, that budget you have, you have made terrible assumptions, it is too high, go back and cut some more. You could give us that guidance. We would have a lot more budget meetings for you all to attend. Um, or you could say, sort of, we don't want you to spend money on this. We think you should really think about spending it on these programs, um, most of which we are legally required to provide, so we will tell you, sorry, change the law, and then we will not spend money. Um, after approval, after your approval, um then it does go to the board. The tax rate and uh tax limitations go to the board, and those appropriation limits, we are, we have to abide within those. Once the board adopts a budget, we have to live with them. Uh, there are some options, particularly if there's a new grant. Last year, we adopted the budget, we did not know we were getting seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. We had to go to the board and say, hey, uh, could we have permission to spend this money we just got? So that would happen. So after, even after the board adopts it, prior to June thirtieth, those budget adjustments. Um, okay, and we did, again, we, basically what we've said, this proposed budget isn't, when we give it to you, is informed by the priorities. Um, this is a process that's been going on. I think Superintendent mentioned, you know, we work with our, with Oregon Department of Education, we work with our legislators, trying to figure out where that money's going to come from, what it's going to be uh given to us for, how we're gonna work through this. She has a call every week with other superintendents. Where are we in the legislature? What's going on? I have a call with other business managers every week. Where, what are we hearing? What are we seeing? How are you building a budget? What assumptions are you making? But what we want, oh, go ahead.
No, I, I will say, this is my fourth biennium.
Oh, biennium.
My fourth biennium. This has been the most dramatic of funding, just where we are, and just different things that we have seen, so.
But again, we, we pointed, the state school fund, larger than it's ever been, increased by a greater percentage than it's ever been.
And we're still cutting.
And we are not the only school district cutting, in spite of, every school district is cutting positions, cutting programs, because even though with this incredible amount of state support, because these costs are so challenging, and student needs are high. So, um, we've given you an opportunity to start submitting questions. We want to know what questions you will need as individuals, as in a group, to be able to look through um a proposed budget when we commit to you. Um, and we will continue to try to answer those and get answers to the questions we've already received out to you. So this last slide, the important dates. Uh, we will have a we will have, I will have, we will have a draft proposed budget to you by May ninth. That's, that's our goal. Um, we are taking a lot of assumptions, and we'll tell you what those assumptions are, if they've changed from this. We keep mentioning the state May revenue forecast. The legislature will not do much of this work until they find out what state economists think the state is giving for revenue. We've mentioned they are getting bombarded with new requests. Every, mental health needs statewide are higher. We all know that social service needs are higher. The governors had hoped to pass a significant increase in support for transportation, for housing. All of those requests are bottled up at the legislature, waiting for this May fourteenth revenue forecast. So our next meeting with you is scheduled for May nineteenth. Not a lot of time, even though I work weekends and nights, for us to build you a whole new budget based on what we think that revenue forecast might do. So we're gonna do a proposed for you on May ninth. We may come to the meeting on the nineteenth and go, wow, huge decrease in revenue? Our whole budget may be void, right? But we still won't know. So June second would be a potential third budget committee meeting. If we have a lot of unanswered questions, either ourselves or from you, we could potentially meet on June second.
And then Board of Directors, I will just tell you, at our May meeting, I may request, depending on what happens, that we look at doing our board meeting the following Monday after June second. So then this committee could do the work that needs to be done. We need a couple hours to do that. And then we could just adjust our June. And then we could just adjust our June. So we may be bringing that to you. I just want to make that, you're aware of that.
Would that still be a public hearing?
Yes.
No, the board hearing, the public hearing would likely be June twenty-third. We would have public comments. We would have public comment at the May nineteenth meeting. We will bring you a proposed budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, public comment at that May nineteenth meeting. And then June twenty-third is the actual board here, where you would, the board would adopt the budget. So again, if, if anything you want, if you want to learn more about sort of how the budget is already existing or current year stuff, I would be glad to meet with you or talk to you or email, answer questions. If you have questions about future, this future budget that we're building, continue to submit those to Paula. You should have her email or give her a call. We'll set up a meeting. We will include the questions we've received so far, and as you continue to submit them along with the answers that we have prior to that May ninth meeting as well.
May, May ninth.
May ninth meeting.
May nineteenth.
May nineteenth meeting as well, but I should, I will probably send them out on May ninth with the proposed. But to, just to let you know the answers, if we have them, and can communicate them to you.
And just, I looked up the Senate bill. It's Senate bill eight four nine is the first.
Now, we forget the ones that already passed. Now we've got to focus on what is the first.
So I think we've got on the agenda discussions and questions, being that it is eight fifteen. I don't want to spend a huge amount of time on, on questions just yet because we've already started the format of submitting questions to Paula. That being said, I know there's some questions out there now, and maybe we don't have time to answer them, but we can at least get them out there.
I want to receive questions.
So I guess I'd open the floor to some questions, recognize that we may not get answers tonight. We may not have them available. We may not have time to do that. But if we've got some questions that are burning, I know I have a couple myself. It would be nice to kind of go through there. So any questions that we want to throw out there right now or submit through writing?
Well, I submitted today, didn't get on the list, but it will be on the list.
Perfect. And I, I commit to all of you, we're going to get all the questions answered. That is one of the most crucial parts of this budget committee, is getting questions answered, being comfortable when we look at a final budget. If you're hearing from friends and neighbors and community members, that's also your opportunity to bring those questions. Let's make sure everybody feels comfortable that you got them addressed. So it won't be tonight per se, but before we vote on a budget, we should all be comfortable that our questions got addressed for the best of our good. Some of us don't know what's going to happen in the future, so we may not answer those questions, but we'll do the best we can.
I think some of the questions that were on that list were answered tonight.
I think so. Yeah. So, and I've got a couple of questions that I'd like to maybe not answer tonight, but get those out there. The first one is, as we look at the uncertainty with federal funding, and then we look at state funding and the general funds, you know, the thirty-two million, thirty-four million. My question is, based on what you hear out of the media, how much of the state funds are potentially influenced by federal funding behind the state funds? You know, is it, is it, it is roughly fifty percent, sixty-five percent? Because there is a component of the flow-through, right?
Sure. Good question.
And I'm curious about that because you know, you hear about this spat with Maine, and they call funding, you know, what's our worst case scenario look like?
So just, just generally on that, so for example, the state school fund is based on income tax paid by Oregonians. So the state school fund dedicated to that is, is not related to federal funding at all. The federal funds, as we talked about, are Title I, are child nutrition, are individuals experiencing disabilities. So those funds are federal money that comes through the state. If somebody gets mad and says, Oregon, you're done, and we're done, we still have a federal requirement to serve students experiencing disability. We still have a moral obligation to feed hungry children in our community. We still have a need to provide extra educational support to students experiencing poverty to help them catch up. At that point, then do we all look at the legislature and go, we need that money now from the state? That's what's happening all over. The state doesn't have it. We're in a big crisis.
What is the biggest question is how much is?
Yeah, like on. So here's what I'll say. We have an anticipation that we may not get it. And, and I, I want to be careful because we, we still have, there's still people in some of that funding. We are trying to build the budget as best as possible, that if we didn't have that money, how well, what, what are we going to look like? I still think there, there are still a handful of the federal funds that have people in it. So should we lose that? Then we're going to have to figure out, how does that work from that, that perspective? So we, early on, as this started to happen, we, we, we tried to get as many people out of federal funding, people, because we, we just, we didn't want to have to deal with that. I think it will impact things like professional development. So a lot of our money that we put into our title funding is professional learning for our staff. That will not happen. We have days built in, so we will continue that. Our principals do a really good job of doing that during the times where they have staff meetings or, or times where they have set aside to do those pieces. But, you know, again, I think that's some of the, I think the other piece that we just have to watch is Medicaid and Medicare. So I'm just going to say that out loud. If there are cuts at the federal level that could greatly impact the state budget, which could then affect what potentially they're going to give us, right? So two weeks from now, Medicaid gets cut at the federal level. I don't know that eleven-four will stand, right? Those are some of the still unknowns that we have to still work through, because we do have a big part of that. So that's the, like, I want to give you an answer, but this is the uncertainty of what we're just having to still.
Kind of what I was thinking.
Just rough numbers. This is the budget you adopted, you approved, and we adopted last year. You didn't get to see all these pages until after it was adopted, but this book is available on the website electronically. Last year, our entire budget for the school district was approved and adopted at sixty-nine million, three hundred thousand. Five million, eight hundred, nine hundred thousand of that was federal funds. Two hundred and, or two point five million of the five point eight was child nutrition.
But then what percentage of the state funds?
We got, this is, this is all money that would not be from the feds. It's all flows through the state. We don't get it directly from the feds. They block, they give block amounts to the state.
So would it be a whole lot of extra work to build the stress case? Then, you know, in the budget, where you just X out the federal funds, so we can look at a stress case?
Sure. Yeah. If, if the budget committee and the board, for example, said you need to keep doing child nutrition exactly the way we're doing it, with zero federal dollars next year, two point five million dollars out of the general fund is a hundred teachers?
Two point five.
Two point five million. We're saying two hun, we're saying a hundred.
Did you say a hundred teachers?
No.
I thought she did.
No, we're talking about probably eighteen.
Two point five million?
Two point five million, okay. You're speaking.
For example, a day of school, to run a day of school is about two hundred thousand.
But the whole school district?
So there you go. That's how many school days you would have to cut to be able to add the money to buy.
I, I just, I do think it's not too much effort. I think the rest of visually be able to see a stress case would give us feel for the worst case, you know, everything falling out of the sky.
And, and I want to be clear, that'll probably be done by what we call as furloughing days, because that is such, that is one of the ways, so there would be things.
It's between eighteen and twenty teacher.
Yeah, and that's just the service that we can give you the whole five million, right?
I, I had a question. What if, you know, we go through the whole budget process and get a budget, and you provide it to us, you know, to look at? And then three weeks later, everything is cut. I mean, what is our, and, and I'm not going to complain. What is our job then to come back and help create a brand new budget with the?
Great, great question. And Oregon state budget law, if changes are within ten percent, the board can make those decisions. If the changes are greater than ten percent, it does, it does require us to come reconvene the budget committee to make changes.
Which all of you would be called back. Hopefully that doesn't occur, but if it does, I think it gives me a measure of comfort that we would have impact. If we were needed, we would be called back to reexamine.
Right. If we have our final budget meeting the first week of June, and we have to adopt a budget by the end of June, and I have public notice requirements in between those, we may adopt an unrealistic budget, but have you all come back in July.
Okay. I'm willing to do that, so.
Would it be worth them putting that together right now and spend all that time when there really needs to, to give us a proposal by May ninth? If it's a doomed day that we might not know until after June.
We, we can get some rough things, I think, is just.
I think building a stress case, you could just go through and X out line items, or zero those out. Get us a feel for what that looks like. I don't know if it's worth it or not, but I know it'd help me feel comfortable, kind of knowing what the worst case scenario is. And it wouldn't be any fun to adopt an unrealistic budget, but if there was ever a year that might happen, it could be this year. And, you know.
Our reality.
As, as long as we're doing the best we can with the information available, you know, there might be questions in the community, but we can feel confident we're doing the best we can.
Yeah, we, we can tell you, like you said, just off the top of our heads, we can say, X number of school days, X number of we use teacher staff, since they are paid considerably more than they ever classified. But we could say programs, right? Cut, cut career tech ed, right? We don't get federal funding.
This is hurting my heart. It's hurting my heart in so many different ways as a superintendent, but I appreciate the conversation.
But that's what we're supposed to do.
A hundred percent.
Career tech ed is not legally required. Educating students with experience in disabilities is a federal require.
Can I ask a question that I don't know that this is really budget committee related? So this can just be something that you're like, hey, we'll chat about this later. But obviously, attendance is a concern, that when I see, like, as a parent, I see that up there, that's a number that feels like there could be some room to improve on. Obviously, the budget committee is not in charge of increasing attendance, but are there programs that are being looked at at the district? Either that are being built into the budget or that are being looked at as incentivization that can assist with increasing that attendance? And that can be something we discuss later. I don't know.
We could talk about that, May. Thank you.
I think that's spot on, because that absolutely ties in with our budget, so it's a great question.
If we want, if, I think if we say we want the district to concentrate on getting attendance up, and if that means other programs, and that's where we want to spend your money towards, then.
Yeah, or if there's other partnerships with parents or, I think about PTAs, like, is there ways to activate groups that are already meeting that maybe could be useful in some of this incentivization? I'm curious if there's.
I, I know principals are working extremely hard on communications and different things, on the importance of that. That doesn't mean that we solved everything. Again, we, we, we built some, and we built some programming already with the postcards and just different things. Trying to communicate more on a consistent basis with families.
I think where my mind went too is if there's things that we can be thinking about as a budget committee of where we could, where the district could use support, and things that we could think about on the back end that outside of this room, I, I would love to hear if there's places where that, that could be useful to have that thought. I'd love to be a helpful part of that solution outside of this space.
Well, there's so many avenues to that, that if you're all right with it, let's just add that to the list and make sure we cover it. Because I was thinking the same thing. I think we're all over. And then the other question, does, again, doesn't need to be answered tonight, but I heard some discussion on this. But it had to do with the, the server issues that caused no school to tell, you know, telecommunications. And we touched on it briefly, but I wasn't really convinced that we had the grants pending or approved to really fix that particular issue. And as a budget committee member, I was a little frustrated. I was like, well, did I miss something last year that we could have budgeted for to prevent this? And I don't think we really got in the weeds. But it would be nice to know, as we approve a budget, that at least that issue is addressed somehow, or, you know, how we're addressing.
Yeah, we'll talk a little bit more about our tech plan.
Yeah, or any issue that's like, hey, we're barely looking this by, this could be a potential concern. It would be nice to know.
Yep. That would be, that would be nice to, other potential surprises, just so we're not caught off guard, having been on the budget committee going, huh? So, yeah, I think that'd be helpful, too. If there's any other questions we want on the record, we can get those for FAQs. Otherwise, we can take a recess until May nineteen. We've all had enough fun for one evening. Well, then we will, we will take a recess until May nineteen. Thank you, everyone, for your time, and great discussion, babe.
Yep, thank you.
I feel like I'm behind schedule by the end. A little long, but it was really a good segment.
You can leave on it if you don't want to. Yep.
Name tags, are we?
Yeah, I think Paula's going to take all of that. So if you want to just leave your stuff, we'll collect them. And you don't, and if you want to take them with you, that's great. We'll also send out the PowerPoint, so we'll get that PDF thing out to you all as well. I, I think, I was in a training the other day. They caught in error that they're training with this, like that. Because the couple of principals, I was sitting in the back, and the one was going through the attendance, and two of our principals were like, wait a second. I know this kid wasn't here, and they're showing a hundred percent attendance, but that has not been fixed. So I will check. I will.
Somewhat you're seeing, you get texts, if a child was not at.
And then I text him.
Five minutes later, they got off the bus. And I'm like, that's not right, but I know they were at school, so.
Well, no, I get it, like, he's missing this period, and I, I was, and I'm like, he should be at school. What do you mean? He's missing this period. And then they're like, oh, well, we didn't know if he was out for power here.
I hope that's not factoring into these numbers, because that'd be horrible.
Well, it's, and so what it is, but the other conservative worst, because we have so many. That they are not as effective at submitting correct attendance, right? So we are trying to see what we should be either of that, oh, some faculty were always at power here, or they don't.
Maybe we could tie something to incidentals, and to be a nice one that question on this. Because it may not. Because I often wondered that too, and like, well, hopefully we text them.
Yeah, there, there is some of that.
I appreciate all of your work.
Well, have a good evening.
You too. Thank you.
Uh, thank you again. Thank you for all your work.
Appreciate you being on the committee.
Super interesting stuff. I'll go back and look, but I will.
Because we knew it wasn't working right.
So I'll tell you the answer on the phone. Wade Carey. Cause he didn't know.
That's quite a change.
He didn't know much better. So he brought, he found someone who does this, because I just know it. I wasn't curious. And everything was working fine.
Till we started raising our. It works out pretty good.
Is.
Yeah, see you in May.
Generation. So we can't. I don't know.
It doesn't matter what it is, it's the same.
Well, they would.
Oh, I, cause I was just. I wasn't expecting a hundred. I mean, I'm not stupid, but it did make enough.
Then, there is no way it can be detailed on a bill.
But they should be able to calculate what puts out. They looked at that year and they say, it put out so much money once for a month.
And somebody has to look at it.
Once a month or something, you know.
The state called once and said, hey. Well, it used to be on the website, and then that, that connection is what. So I'm not sure anyone, maybe month apparently, although Wade was a key with that.
Hey, are we offline, Paula?
People now that are going on solar on their houses and they read.
Well, that's what they hold for after. They say, if you generate this much, you should in Oregon.